Call this meeting to order if you stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now please have a moment's silence for the recent passing of our 41st president, Thank you, please have a seat. If you have a cell phone on, please place it on vibrate or silent or shut it off. Rocom?
Karlovic?
Here.
Kramer?
Here.
Rechner?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Ister?
Um, I received some information, it was last minute, but it's not on your paper agenda, but I'm going to be placing under unfinished business the topic of our city clerk. So, I make a motion to approve the minutes and reports of November 12th, November 26th of 2018, and reports of the fire department, police department, treasurer, engineer, and court office, around a second. Oh, and the controllers' reports.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Are there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time? Chestnut Street update.
The payment is complete, in the late, we've been issued about 300 block on the south side, bed connection will be there more and more, we're working on that. Alexi Razi on Chestnut Street.
Linda?
Yes, CDBG. Thank you. I'm here this evening to make a recommendation for, to counsel, about the three-year engineering agreement. We received nine proposals for three years of CDBG engineering from 2019, 20, and 21. I reviewed those based on experience, relevant experience and cost. I'm recommending to counsel that they award this contract to CES Engineering, and CES provided a proposal that met all the requirements at the lowest cost. Any questions?
I can make a motion to accept that recommendation?
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have some paperwork that I gave to Terry that will need to be signed by tomorrow and get that rolling. Then the only other thing I have is, I'm still working on the application for the Reagan Street flood mitigation grant, and we did not receive enough letters of support yet for CDBG reviewers to take that application seriously. So I'm going to be passing around a pad of paper here. If anyone here who's a city resident and would like to write a brief letter of support here, just with the date, your name, address, and something as simple as, "I use Reagan Street several times a week," or "when I go to the doctor," whatever, I'm hoping that you will consider supporting this grant application to reduce flooding on Reagan Street, and just sign your name, it does not have to be typed. I'll just send this around, and it can hit down there, and maybe Terry or Mike or somebody can, if you don't mind, just make sure that even if it stays here, I can get it at a later date, and then folks can just sign it, leave the tablet here. If anybody who's up, I'm hoping we can get some quick letters of support that way. Any questions? Okay. Unless you have anything further for me, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kramer, the budget?
I'd like to make a motion, we've done two J- billiards, we've gone to All Street now, and we're not going to raise taxes, so I'd like to make a motion that we second.
Second that.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tax levy?
The next thing is the tax levy, which we have to pass every year, and it's staying the same as before because we're not raising the taxes. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept that.
Second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes. Alright, um, so this is the topic that I was saying that's on the, wasn't on the paper agenda yet. We have advertised the new position of city administrator with Career Link, PA Downtown Center, PA Municipal League, the daily item, news item, and Patriot News, Penn Live News, and spent a total of $3,886 since August advertising this position. Due to receiving a limited amount of applications for our city administrative position and a lack of finding qualified candidates for the position, I have spoken with a current city clerk, Terry Spake, who has been on the job for 24 years, she has agreed to stay on in her position as city clerk after her January 31 retirement on a part-time basis or as needed to help the city since there is no city administrator at this time. She agrees to do this at an hourly rate of $30 per hour with no benefits. I see no problem accepting this generous offer since we have another employee in another department who has retired and stayed on as a part-time employee. This allows us the opportunity to find the right person for the city administrative position while keeping an extremely qualified employee in the office without rushing or making a wrong decision due to a lack of qualified candidates. And I make this into a form of motion, do I have a second?
Just have a question. So, this is the first I'm hearing of it. So, the $30 an hour, do we have an idea on roughly amount of hours a week, I know you said part-time basis, is it 40 hours a week, 50 hours a week, as needed hours a week?
It's, it's up towards at that time, because right now we're, we at least have a mandate to a solution of not having someone, even if we hired someone now, they wouldn't be available until towards the end of December, that leaves one month to train this new person to know everything about the city.
I think all is out.
It's as, as needed. It's not set out.
So there's no set, we'll just know closer to that time, depending on how much training she has, or he has part-time.
It's probably, probably at least 20 hours a week.
I, I don't know, it's, whatever anybody needs.
It really depends once we gather, because we, we still haven't told.
So it, in return, we'll just be a weekly changing schedule, really?
Yes.
It'll be as, if we know it's a busy week, should work more, if it's less, it should just be changing.
Okay, it's a council meeting, maybe it's more.
Do I have a second for that?
One second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
After our Mr. Last council meeting, I sat and watched the online recording of it to see what took place, and I heard Regina Russell's recommendation, and immediately thought that it is a great idea. I continue to give condolences concerning the recent passing of Jesse Woodring to his family. Mr. Woodring served in US Air Force from 1954 to 58, and served as our city mayor. He was the recipient of many different awards, served on many different boards and commissions, and was a prominent member and businessman in our city, and I'd like to truly honor him. I have spoken with members of Mr. Woodring's family regarding naming our amphitheater and having a special dedication service in the springtime when the weather warms up again, and they are honored that I am offering to do this in recognition of his dedication and life achievements. I believe this location is the best choice to honor Mr. Woodring due to a very special swing that was dedicated by city officials and his late son back in 2016, and for his participation during the riverfront project. I have spoken with municipal authority to check regulations and to make sure that we are able to place a sign at the amphitheater, and we are within the guidelines and okay to place the sign. I have also spoken with a sign manufacturer to get their expert recommendations and an estimate for a sign which I'm still waiting on, an installation that will be placed near our amphitheater and be protected in case of a flood event. I'd like to honor Mr. Woodring for his service and dedication to our country and to our community by naming our riverfront amphitheater the Jesse C. Woodring Amphitheater, and having a special memorial dedication service with placement of a sign in the springtime of 2019. And I make this into a form of motion, do I have a second?
One second. Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Thank you. After advertising and conducting many interviews, I have found a candidate for the position of administrative assistant, which was Cheryl Dale Sykes' prior position in the office. That would be a great addition to our team of employees. I make a motion to hire Jolynn Barner as the new full-time administrative assistant at an hourly rate of $12 per hour with a six-month probation period. Do I have a second?
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, one quick question. I actually, I'm sure she'll come in and help.
Yes, she, um, Jolynn Barner will be coming in after hours until she gives notice to her employee. Councilman Ister, the WPA?
Yes, WP, we've been working this for two years now, we received a grant probably two years ago, slowly getting things together. I have to make a motion, we have a, we went out for bids, we received a bid, so we haven't awarded it yet. HRI was the bidder of $301,87, and what that was there was to install the ready rock, it was 1,010 feet, I believe it is, which will be replaced. What had happened was a core of engineers rode up the, that section involved because it was deficient. Of course, then we applied for the grant, received the grant, and we're slowly putting this together for next spring. This is on the, on the, uh, this motion, tomorrow evening, municipal authority will be taking, making a, we hope a motion to take and fund the other match, which is roughly a little over $125,000. Once that's complete, we'll follow up on this, but we'll make this motion this evening with the understanding we received the letter of intent of a match through municipal authority Wednesday. Questions?
As long as we can have someone correct the amount, numeral amount on there, is it wrong?
No, this, this is, oh, I'm sorry.
Because it says 30187.
It's 807.
But if we can have them correct this.
Mr. Mayor, once we give the documentation for the municipal authority sign, the agreement, we'll proceed with the awarding of the contract. Need a second?
No, there's no motion, just a second.
Sorry about that.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Oh, well, we can do that through co-star, we don't need a bid for that. We asked you to put it on the agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Just to, just to say you're getting it from co-stars, yes.
Okay. WP, well, the ready rock material will be bought through the same company which we purchased before, the sum of $222,830. We're buying that direct, on the price of all of the sales tax. Make that for a motion also. Thank you, Terry.
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Councilman Reese, regarding the website?
Yeah, so Mayor and I met with someone about possibly rebuilding our website. One of the things that I personally, Mayor, also looked at wanting to redo is just kind of have a website that's a little bit more user-friendly, a little bit more things that we can do on there in the future, makes more paying, online accessible, a little bit easier to navigate through the website. And we were able to get it into the budget for 2019 to be able to have the funds to do that. We met with someone, Developed LLP, they are a business here in Sunbury, and they, this is what they do. They built the SRI website, and some other websites around as well, and they've come to us with a bid, sent that out to everyone, it was a week ago, and then Joel looked at it, asked for the changes, which this is what you have in front of you. So I'm making a motion to accept the proposal to go into agreement with Developed LLP to rebuild our website in 2019.
Wait a second then.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Rechner, do you have anything?
Okay, yeah, this is the emergency operations plan, order of secession, and the, the, the plan itself is staying the same, but the order of succession has changed with the people in council and stuff. So I'm making a motion that we accept this, just to put the new names on it for the succession of, of the contact people and the people who's, like for, for example, Mayor Kirk, hello, we said line of succession is Beth Kramer, myself, and Chris Reese, and for Beth Kramer would be me, Chris Reese, and Jim Ister, right on down the line. And we had, we had to add to, add to new names, and we had to have a resolution change and do it. So I make that motion.
Okay.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes. This was one to get done, once the administrator came there, we, we talked about this six, seven months ago, about reamping our non-uniform operation. And one of the things that was discussed back then, with it all, was changing some holidays. It's a personal thing for employees, it's not going to affect their time, they're still going to have the benefit of the payoff or anything like that. If they choose to use that time on that holiday period, they want, welcome to do it. Plus, the city will be open for business on those three days, which will benefit my office because of contractors needing to get in, people needing to get in, stuff like that. The three holidays are President's Day, Columbus Day, and Flag Day. So I make the motion that we change those three days.
Well, before we continue with the motion, President's Day and Columbus Day is both federal and state holidays, and we checked at the banks, and the banks actually are closed on those two days, so it makes no sense to keep our government organization open when all other state and federal government agencies are closed, as well as the banks.
I make a motion that we change those days to, to a personal pitch.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
No.
Kramer?
No.
Rechner?
Yes.
So then, the only government foundation open in two, three days, that's what you're saying.
We're going to have employees sitting in the office.
So most of the, 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 nothing.
Put anybody that wants to come in.
I can see Flag Day, but I can't see President's Day.
Anybody that wants to come in and do work.
We should have adopted the states federal, the states holidays list, and then gave two personal holidays. What is that?
Wow. Impressive.
Alright, Councilwoman.
So that's why I pay, you have opinion, I got opinion, I understand.
Councilwoman Kramer, the 2019 fee schedule.
Oh, listen, Kevin, you don't have to work that day.
I know, but I still take consideration of the other employees, and store the office, and store it.
Your employees can take off that day, Kevin.
Nothing was taken away from anybody.
I know that, I know that, it just seems that you take something away that you have too. Two other entities are completely down. I don't see the, I don't see the common sense.
But then why isn't everybody listed off that day?
Because they take days off for hunting, that's why.
That's not true.
That's true.
Three crew takes off for hunting.
It is true.
Did my guys go hunting?
They have the day off, first day of year.
No, we work that day, yeah.
I don't know if they work or not, but they have that day off.
I understand what you're saying, but you don't. Who would ice skate right through that?
It's different, it's a different situation.
Yes, it is, that's exactly.
Seems to me that once we start taking stuff to the truth.
That was not being tragically intended.
No, but it makes no sense to keep the offices open when all other government agencies are closed, which we are, as well as the banks are closed, or to the holidays that were taken away.
I see it as we're making it easier to continue work in the city through those days. There's projects that are being done.
Alright, Councilwoman Kramer, fee schedule, please.
We have a new fee schedule here, that was, everything was raised, this is double to what it was before. So I'd like to go back to.
No, it's the same, we're just doing what we can.
The thing that was raised was the zoning, zoning hearing, and the.
So this is the late fees, that's where I was.
Yeah, that's, that's when they, tickets go up.
Yeah. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to have the, the schedule.
Second that.
Pick an operable week, vehicles as a.
The only thing that's highlighted, or an operable vehicle and vehicles parked in private property. And zoning hearing, that's how that is.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Ister?
Councilwoman Kramer, approve of paying.
Right now, we have $32,883.23 in general fund, and we have $872.74 in local fuel. I'd like to make that a motion that we pay those bills.
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tax exoneration?
We have two people on the list for exoneration, totals $267.36. I'd like to make that a motion.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
I have been receiving numerous complaints about individuals knocking on our residents' doors or leaving information about selling something. With the recent increase of break-ins in our city as seen lately, I do take it seriously because it is a serious issue. We all must be vigilant and have a watchful eye regarding suspicious activity. Our city has a peddling and soliciting ordinance, and all participants must apply and receive a license from our city. The license will be typed and not handwritten on a yellow sheet of paper, have the city seal pressed onto it, and then be laminated, and the person, the solicitor or the peddler will be carrying it, and this is what it looks like. So if someone comes knocking on your door and wanting to sell you something, solicit, peddle, ask the city, do you have the license from the city? If they say no, or they say, "I'm not showing it to you," shut your door, lock the door, and then call 911. If you see something, please say something. I recommend our businesses and homeowners to invest a few hundred dollars and place a security camera on their property, and make sure that all their windows and doors are locked when no one is present. For the 2019 board reappointment vacancies, we have two vacancies available to fill, one in the zoning hearing board due to the recent death of Jesse Woodring, which the term expires the end of 2019, and one in the municipal authority board due to the recent death of George Groff, which the term expires the end of 2020. Anyone who is interested in volunteering to be on these boards, please send a letter of interest to the mayor's office with your contact information and why you're interested, and a decision will be made the first council meeting in January. The free Sunbury City Band Concert to benefit the Shiklemy Marge and Graves is Monday, December 17th, at 7:00 PM at the Zion Lutheran Church.
Zion.
Zion.
Thank you.
A special city council meeting, January 2nd, 2019, at 2:00 PM to pass the 2019 TAM resolution, that's going to be?
Uh.
It's 20.
Where do we have it?
First floor conference room.
First floor conference room, on the first floor downstairs. The next regular scheduled city council meeting is January 14th, 2019, at 6:15 PM. Is there any audience comment at this time? The tax anticipation note, ma'am, that we apply for every year? Any other question, or any other comments tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I have to make one comment real quick. I just want to let everybody know, I know we've been down with manpower, we're working on that. In the fall here, we had our aggressive driver grant and seatbelt buckle-up grant, and then the month of November, five of them pretty much went out of dill, we had a dill, we ended up citing 162 drivers with multiple violations throughout the city. I want to commend Officer Driscoll and Officer Johnson. Officer Driscoll actually issued 80 citations in that month, and Officer Johnson issued 45. And I say, recognizing them, that they're out there doing their job with the manpower issue that we do have, because residents are saying they're not seeing us out there, but they, we have it out there, and they did a great job on, during that aggressive driver blitz and seatbelt violation during the month of November, so I just want to recognize them tonight, that they did a great job on that.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Is there any other comment, police department, if you?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Demos Elafanadurias, and I know one thing, like we said before, one essence under the God of justice and liberty for all. Everybody who celebrates our holidays and our independent days. Last week, I hear a Jew lady say about the Hanukkah, celebrate the Hanukkah from the tyranny of the Greeks. Nothing wrong with that, but I don't want to, in here, pay the sins of those Greeks 3,000 years ago, because I remember three years, three, maybe five years ago, I fixed the, I have a contractor hired over there to fix the 360 Market Street. And the contractor hired another guy, that guy painted the house of the, two houses after me, was the doctor, lady. And I don't know what happened, the Jew goes shower, and my contractor not pay the, the guy. And the lady coming and say to me, "Pay the guy." Pay the guy for what? I don't make a deal with, with him, the contractor making the, "Pay the guy because you're going to be sorry." And that time, I don't pay no attention, because, and she got outside, chant, "I dare you, I don't pay attention." But now, I hear that in the radio, the tyranny of the Greeks, and I don't know, probably in here, the Jews lobby turn against me because I'm Greek? I don't know. Because the Maccabees turn against the, the third, and he be killed, they say only about the Greeks, but for the Titus, when he burned the table of the Solomon, or the Adrian, kill, destroy everything that the Jews spray all over the wall, they don't say nothing. And my NATO country, Greece, the Jews over there, this, this nation, inside the nation, they don't pay no taxes in the government, only paying taxes to them. They no go soldiers in the Greek, the Greek army, they go on the Israel. And that lady complain about the Greeks? I don't know. Anything in the newspaper to, to write, or the guy making some statement in the newspaper? Explain, that lady going to explain to me? Your newspaper, all right? I don't know, that, that lady spoken Friday about, about the Hanukkah. Everybody celebrate the holidays. I have no idea what you're talking about. And she say they celebrate the Hanukkah about the tyranny of the Greeks. I don't, I don't think I want to pay, because I'm, I'm Greek American. I only read my stuff. And pay the sins of 3,000 years ago. You have to call the newspaper. You can write something in the newspaper about that, the lady come to talk to me, and, and talking about the history? You have to call the newspaper, I, I only read my stuff, I don't know what else. I don't know.
Mr. Demos?
Yes.
I don't think these comments were made towards you, but passed thousands and thousands of years.
Yeah, but a few years ago, that lady, "I don't pay attention." And now, because I'm Greek, she say, "Pay the guy because you're going to be sorry." And I don't make a deal with that guy, my contractor make a deal with that guy.
Do you own property in Sunbury?
Yes, 360, 360 Market Street.
Do you live in Sunbury?
Yes, I live in Sunbury.
Mr. Nemo, you are a Sunberrian.
Sunberry.
Sunbury.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay.
And I'm American.
If anybody makes any negative reference to you, one ear out the other, because you are a Semite.
Yeah, but if you say something for the Jews, you are the Semite. How come? We have the different measurements and different studies? I don't know that. It's not good. If you say something for the Jews, they going for one ear or the other. Will the FBI or the police come to and take you, take you away? What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
Do you know her name?
She's a doctor. That's four, five years ago. I don't pay attention that time. But when I hear the news last Friday, the tyranny of the Greeks, and my mind flashing, the lady say to me, "Pay the guy because you're going to be sorry." What? Who is that? Because the guy, the worker was a Jew, or the, like the Bible say, you know, if you look at the apostleism and the numbers, and you, you see what happened in the, in the Bible.
So she threatened him, isn't, there's something?
I think that's what he's trying to say.
I don't pay attention that time.
But if it happened five years ago, there's.
Yeah, I don't pay, but when I hear that, the tyranny of the Greeks, probably she got, she got, you know, something against the Greeks.
Maybe we should find out. So go to a higher agency. Go to a state or federal agency.
On, on our, on our side, there's not much we can do.
That's five years ago, but now, hey. Like I say, in my NATO country, Greece, the Jews, they don't pay no taxes. And the Greek government here, everybody pay taxes. Yes or no? Over there, they don't pay. Over there, they no go on the Greek army. They go on, and the Israeli army. And they try to say the tyranny of the Greeks. Give me a break.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for your comment tonight.
Okay. Just, I wanted to know what's going on. That's it. Because everybody, we are Americans here. We don't have to look what happened 2,000 years ago or 3,000 years ago.
You're right. I don't think we can give you an answer at our level of the government. I think you need to go to state or federal to complain about this.
Yeah, but like I said.
Question me, because if, you know, we have no say, you know, overall, what happened 30,000.
If you say something, and for the Jews, they say, "You are the Semite." Boom. They put a stamp. But they free to say whatever they wanted to say. We'll have the two, two different measurements and.
I think that's, that's a civil liberties issue.
You know. That's all I want to know.
Talk to Linda Schmigle about it.
Because five years ago, I'm saying, "Attention." I hear on the radio, the tyranny of the Greeks. The tyranny of the Greeks. They celebrate the tyranny of the Greeks.
She said talk to Linda Schmigle.
Which one?
She's our local representative.
They're our state representative.
I don't know who is. Just going to come in your office.
Talk to Regina Russell, ACU.
Our state representative's on Arch Street.
Arch Street?
Arch and Front Street. The big stone building.
Okay. I say Regina Russell, ACU.
Okay, thank you.
Any other audience comments tonight? Mr. Wahlberg?
Yeah, I'll just make it quick. I think the Christmas decorations are spectacular. I drive around and I look at them. They look really nice. You guys did a fine job. I like the new tree. I like the big things that you put on Front Street. Everything looks very good. So hats off to you. Everything looks really good.
So with that, that reminds me, Councilman Ister, we've received plenty of phone calls and people stopping into the office asking about the nativity set. I've heard that we can't put it out because the protective covering is broken? Is that?
Actually, the trailer that we used to have it on collapsed. The covering that you were referring to, and it has not been rebuilt?
So I was wondering if you could.
Jimmy and I looked at it, relooked at it a couple times looking for it too.
So I was wondering, since there's plenty of churches and people that want to get involved with this, maybe you can make an announcement to the public regarding maybe asking for materials in old trailer or donations regarding to help put out this nativity set for next year.
Well, Kevin and I'll do some research again and.
It's hard to find something, especially where you want to put the trailer. It was really.
Keep it on a trailer.
Yeah, it was easy access or. Jimmy and I spent some time with it last year.
But it came back to the financing of it, so.
Well, if, if a utility trailer can be got, what size do you want?
I'd give it like a 16 floor.
Yeah, something like that. But I hate that.
We should set up the figurines and see.
Measure them.
How much.
Because that's what we want to do. We want to build a, we even thought about going out and having somebody, maybe a car and a manager, because the way the old manager looked, you know, the way his angle and stuff. We want all kinds of lines on the whole line.
I think the shop, the shop at the Schikolami High School built the last one.
Is that, yeah, okay.
So go tech or somebody like that, or triangle tech.
When you find one that looks absolutely great, it ends up already being the size of a table.
And possibly a loft count hundred and so on. I need the measurements of the figurines, of course, and we can decide the length of the trailer. The trailer's the issue.
I totally forgot about it, to be honest with you. I know we, we looked a couple times. And we were going to get that bird.
I promise Bob, we haven't done any worse shit. We discussed it this evening. It's, it's obvious it's not. We'll find the trailers of the viewers, the 100, 120. Guys, we'll do your new trailer.
So I was saying, maybe make a comment and maybe the churches can reach out or members of the community that have a spare one or.
We'll do our homework and find out what size we need and then go from there. So by next meeting, we should have some information for the size trailer.
We can just get the basic thing from the platform. Is it possible to study in the, does he go for it?
You have to have them enclosed or something.
Yeah, that's true. You have that measure on the front of that.
Are there any other audience comments tonight?
I wanted to let everybody know that SRI this year did the Downtown Shoppers, which was very, very successful. We tried something different this year. We put crafters and vendors in stores and businesses this year, and that seemed to work out very well. I know a lot of places were really busy and there was a lot of people in the downtown. So hopefully, everybody enjoyed that, and next year, we're going to try and make it bigger and better. Hope everybody has a nice holiday. Enjoy yourself and be safe.
Thank you.
That's what I was saying too.
Francis?
Lord, are you talking for SRI? Can I ask you a question? Are they doing a down, are they doing new leadership?
No, we're not doing new leadership.
You're not? No comment?
All right. So next scheduled council meeting is January 14th, 2019, at 6:15 PM. This room, the special meeting for the TAM resolution is January 2nd, 2019, at 2:00 PM in the downstairs restore conference room. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Francis, do you have another comment?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and please have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year's and all other holidays between weeks, as long as you're here.